Alright, everybody. Welcome to the Village Hall here in the Village of Oregon. We're here for the special joint meeting of the Oregon Area Fire EMS District Mission, the Town Boards of Dunn, Oregon and Rutland, and the Village Boards of Brooklyn and Oregon. It is Wednesday, September 27th, here at 6:30. And Item 1 on the agenda is Call the Order and Roll Call of the Oregon Area Fire EMS District Mission. Jason?
Sure. Derek Bilo?
Here.
Jeff Hodgson?
Here.
Kate Blading?
Here.
Kent Knudsen?
Here.
And Jason Manki? Here.
Alright. Item 2, Call the Order and Roll Call of Town Board of Dunn.
Alright. For Town of Dunn, Steve Gray.
Here.
And Jeff Hodgson.
Here.
And Rosalind Gausman.
Here.
Moving on to Item Number 3, Call the Order and Roll Call of Town Board of Oregon.
Arlen Kai?
Here.
Lori Fitzgerald?
Here.
Carl Walser? Here. Kate Wang?
Yes.
Item 4, Call the Order and Roll Call of Town Board of Brooklyn.
Nancy Nedman?
Here.
Jim Doran?
Here.
Ken Knudsen?
Here.
Sue Williams?
Here.
Mark Porter?
Here.
And Item 5, Call the Order and Roll Call of Village Board of Oregon.
Yep. Derek Bilo?
Here.
Tom Kirschdorfer?
Here.
Jason Manki?
Here.
Lynn McDaniel?
Here.
Amanda Peterson?
Here.
And Phil Van Kampen?
Here.
And Carly Feschen is absent.
Just a couple of things before we get going here. I am Derek Bilo, the Chairman of the Oregon Area Fire EMS District Mission, Member of the Village Board of Oregon. And just to kind of go over a couple of things, just like last meeting, if there's no objections, as we get into the senior center portion of this, I'd like to continue to chair this to keep the meeting moving along, if everyone's alright with that. The other request that I would have for the meeting is our friends at OCA Media are here tonight, so if you could, if you're going to speak, say your name and which municipality you're from. That way, people watching know who's saying what and where you're from. That said, moving on to Item 6, Business, Oregon Area Fire EMS District. Items are for discussion and/or possible action on. 6A, Review of 2023 Financial Statements as of August 31st. And Chief Wenzmer, if you'd like to go ahead and...
Super. So between Lisa's back in the back corner, you've got myself over here, so between the two of us, but basically that's our financials for the fire district of the three townships in the Village of Oregon, for the fire district as we know it, and we set for the date. Any questions on that? Good news is, is that we're still in the black, as you can look at the percentages on the bottom, so anytime we're in the black, I think that's meaning that it's a positive good number to the accounting world, is a good thing. Any questions on any of the financials? And again, that's something that the Commission monthly looks at when we go to monthly meetings, with Jason and Derek and Jeff and all the other group members, and Kate, but can't forget about Kate and Kent. I'm trying to spread the wealth.
Alright, if there's no questions on the financial statements, any questions out there? We'll move on to Item B, Review of Commission Recommended 2024 District Budget.
Okay, so basically, these are the same numbers you saw a few months ago. Was it July we were here, I believe, if my memory serves me right? Everything is the same, except, remember from at that meeting, I talked about the healthcare costs. We know what the healthcare costs are. So I will just tell you upfront, and then Lisa can give her a little detail if you would like, and we've got Kathy here, we've got Jennifer, we've got some townships, they know what the state plan is, and they know what the rates are. So that's the good news, is that we're all on the same page. At the end of the day, it's basically one thing. The healthcare costs went up to the municipalities, about 13%, as I recall. Is that concurred with all the clerks? And everybody's shaking their head, so that's usually a good sign. So those numbers were updated. We are in open enrollment right now, to the best of our ability, between Lisa Peggy, myself, and John, and DC Justburger on the station, all of us believe we have that number exactly correct, in that we should have no other members looking for healthcare costs or any benefits per se. As long as that holds true, Lisa, correct, we should be fine. Concur, Lisa?
Yes.
So, that is where we are with the healthcare costs, as far as the budget. As far as all the other capitals and everything else, everything is built in there, and if you go back to the July meeting, basically our biggest capitals, and Jennifer talked about some of our capitals earlier, she asked me that particular night, about Fire Chief, it was something like, hey, can you get these a little bit lower, and that kind of stuff? And instead of 400 and some thousand, it would be really nice to have it about $200,000. As I recall, that was pretty close to that conversation. At the end of the day, we try to balance this out as much as we can, and keep those costs under control. But still, with that, that 400,000 that we're spending this year is looking at used apparatus. We are looking at replacing with used apparatus. If you remember, we've got Captain Berman and a team looking around the country for a replacement truck of the 22-year-old truck. So far, the ones that we were looking at, we haven't been too successful, because we usually, as Gene put it, you know, I can't even remember exactly how it is, but usually we're too late. So as Fire Chief, we've got to be faster to the draw on some of these options, and some of these trucks are different places, because they're not on the market too long, because more municipalities throughout the country, as we see with our economic times that we currently have, seem to be purchasing vehicles fairly fast. So again, we've got a year to do it. I think we'll be successful in doing that. We've got our words out to a lot of different vendors, and you know, people that sell trucks, use trucks throughout the country, we'll see how that goes. But that's pretty much our biggest expense, as far as our capitals. Other than that, everything else is basically, you know, where the rubber meets the road, or however you look at it. Everything this day and age is about dollars and cents. You think about the dollars and cents, and you think about our men and women at the fire district, as far as the hourly rates, and our pay, and all that kind of stuff. Myself and Derek have met with our organized labor folks here, again, just a few days ago. We had a, basically, a marathon meeting, which I believe was pretty successful. We're getting close. We've been without a contract since the first of the year. And as everyone knows this day and age, everyone wants large, large percentages. And the easiest way that I can say it is that we only have so much money, and we try to make that work, you know, affordable for all the municipalities and all that kind of stuff. And we are getting closer to what works for the fire district and for our operations here. So I would, I'm assuming, I'm very cautiously optimistic, but I would assume, as Phil has worked on other contracts with me, I would assume that December 1st, or early January, we'll have this thing settled, and we'll have everything moving forward. So Derek, anything to add on where we are with that?
No, you summed it up perfectly.
But otherwise, it's just paying people. And again, I can't emphasize enough, I know that our hourly rates with some of our folks, especially our paid on-premise and paid-on-call members, not necessarily our career people. But those folks, again, I know I'm above $4 an hour, under what's happening in Dane County. And the peripheral operations, when I say the peripheral operations, I'm talking about the Sun Prairies, I'm talking about the Mononas, I'm talking about Pittsburgh, I'm talking about Middleton. Drive those costs. And it just is going to be hard in future years to, again, compete with those folks. So dollars and cents means everything, and trying to retain those people, and making sure that they're here. And like I've said before, I think, you know, I don't ever want this to be a threat to any one of our district partners, but it's one of those things, when I don't have men and women to be able to go out on the calls and respond for me, we have to hire full-time people. And full-time people cost 100,000 a throw. So remember that. Keep that in mind. That is just where it is. So we have been very fortunate in what we've been doing, and very thankful for the resources that we have. But I think, oh, I don't know, Kathy here, and probably Jennifer knows what these costs are, these things continue to grow and grow and grow. But that's about as probably good as we can put together for a budget. Kathy?
I have a question. I'm looking through the packet, and I hear budgets, but I didn't see capital budget. Am I missing?
Lisa? Capital budget is rolled in with the total budget, and I believe it's like 823, or 840 down there?
The capital budget is, for each of the different municipalities, is listed on the first page of the budget, right underneath, under the charges for intergovernmental. It lists the operating section first, and then the second portion of that section is the capital portion.
Okay, I see it. So we're looking at Page 6B, everyone? If you look under charges for intergovernmental, then each of the municipalities is broken down, and the first one is operations, and then capital.
Correct.
Thanks, I just wasn't seeing it.
Yep, that's alright. It's in there.
Yep, it is.
Okay. I asked the questions. I like to take the questions, because tomorrow I'll get the phone calls, and the question that Kathy might have now, might be the same question that Jennifer has, or Kate, or Derek, or a lot of people like to come in. I like phone calls, but at the same point, if we talk out loud at this group, it makes it just run a lot smoother. Kent, you had a question?
Kent Knudsen of Rutland, what would you expect the life expectancy of your new truck to be?
We are, we are hopefully going to buy a used truck, that's probably around 10 years, 10 years or so of age, meaning that truck was probably going to be 10 years old, it's going to have low mileage. And I believe that we're going to be able to pull off like we did with one of the last purchases that Jeff was part of, and Phil was part of, from when we bought one of Pittsburgh's truck. We bought a seven-year-old truck there, and we put that on the road for like 12 years. This one here, I believe we're going to be able to make it closer to like 15 to 20. So that is our ultimate goal in doing that.
Why would this one last longer?
This one here is a, basically, is a third-out truck. That's a good question, Kent. That's a third-out truck, which is basically a squad. It's not doing the role, it's not doing the, basically, the peripheral of the Village of Oregon on the village calls. And it goes out second or third, depending on the call suite sequence, and the response that we have, as part of our response for a structure fire, or a car crash, or whatever it may be. So it'll be less miles and that kind of thing. It's just less wear and tear, it'll be able to last longer per se.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Any other questions on the recommended 2024 district budget? There are none. Moving on to Item C, Update on Fire Station Planning Committee.
Do you want me to take that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I will say that we had our first meeting last Thursday night, we had a good group from all the four municipalities, that depicts that the municipalities had from about, oh, six, eight months ago, a year ago, whatever it might be. That group came together, we spent about two and a half hours, as I would believe, going through a lot of different things. So there's a few things that I'd like to remind everyone in this room about. We are the Oregon Area Fire EMS District. First and foremost, there's a couple of things that came up there, that I like to rehash certain things, and draw meetings longer if I can. I'm actually joking. But this is actually a serious little part that if you leave here tonight, we need each other in this fire district, at the end of the day. You guys hired me, Phil hired me, seven years ago plus, for a reason. We brought the three townships, and we brought the Village of Oregon together. We need each other's partnership in order to make that fire district work. That's one of the first things that I will tell you. I came into that operation seven-plus years ago with a contract. Mark, you were there too, I'm sorry, I forgot about Mark. That group that was there, I laid out a bunch of different objectives that I needed to do. And one of the objectives in a plan, a sequence plan, because I didn't know if I was going to stay originally, I was originally hired as a consultant coming into this operation. Here and there, at the end of the day, after six months, I did end up staying, and I'm still here, with that was going back to the contract, the governing, binding document that keeps this operation together. That was never looked at since 1992. I said to Phil, I think Mark was there, Jeff, others, Amanda, not Amanda, Jenna, different players, Dina from the Town of Rutland, a lot of different things, over about two and a half to three years, and other board members or reps, to help me refresh my memory. But we went through that contract, page by page, pretty painfully, trying to get everyone to agree, and make some concessions to make that document work, and to put that document in place. And we did that about a year and a half ago. Martin, I think that's right after you came, probably. There were some concessions that the Village of Oregon made, because why? Because the Village of Oregon felt that they needed more representation, because they got 67%. So the townships made that concession, basically, to the Village of Oregon, saying, hey, we can still work together, we can make this right, and the village recognized that, and we moved this thing through, so we brought this fire district together, and all that kind of thing. Those percentages were set at that particular time. And I've always said from day one, that myself being a Fire Chief here, it is imperative that we have our three townships, and we have the Village of Oregon to make this work. Yes, we know that the Village of Oregon takes on about 67% or 68%, Lisa knows what that number grows to, and that divvies that out accordingly, but at the end of the day, the things that I keep looking at, and I've said to that group, back to the station committee last week, what sets the standard for fire service in Dane County? I'll tell you what it is, because I've been in Dane County a long time ago, and that's the City of Madison Fire Department. Everybody in the city of, in Dane County, and this rural area expects people to be there in a timely fashion. What is the definition of that timely fashion? What is acceptable to you? And the only way you know that answer is when you meet somebody in an emergency. And that varies, because if you've got burnt food in an oven, that's one thing, but if your car's on fire in your garage that's attached to your house, it's a whole different game. So we have mitigated a lot of things over the year. You can see I'm pretty passionate for this, and this is a sore subject when I see certain things happening, but a lot of us have basically built our cards and our responses, that we have auto aid coming from different directions, and all that kind of stuff. I can tell you that, all of that's happening here. And basically, we, all of us, we, again, we like to see somebody there in a five-to-seven minute possible mark, and that's almost virtually impossible for us to get up to the farthest north in the Town of Dunn, but how did we mitigate that for the Town of Dunn? We've got some of our Pittsburgh partners coming across as part of our contract, where in return, we're helping Pittsburgh out on State Farm Road, out in front of the prison. So there's a trade-off. At the end of the day, we have to make this work. So all of this, some of this kind of conversation came up in the station committee, and it came up maybe about two or three years ago, when we started talking about ladders, and how can we get by without ladders, and can we do this stuff, and we just keep pushing this can down the road. We can push cans down the road, we can push all this stuff off, but at some point, something's going to happen, and they're going to be back on myself, or the people that run this operation. And it comes back to ISO ratings, which are basically clearly set by the insurance service organization, talking about ladders, and talking about five-mile response, and out of a particular area, and all that kind of stuff. All this stuff is out there, I can talk about this stuff for 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I've been doing it quite, for quite lengthy time. At the end of the day, my biggest point is, the only way we can absorb our costs and make this affordable for all of us, is we need a large area. I'm even thinking in the larger term, you know, again, more consolidated efforts with others around us, and that kind of stuff, and we only have certain directions, that's probably one way to go. But at the end of the day, these three municipalities, meaning these townships, and the Village of Oregon, need to work together, and to continue to move forward in the progress movement. And there was a little bit of a hiccup, just for a short bit. We got over it that night, because people asked that question, and then that tells me that I'm not doing a good job in educating and bringing back the history of the contract and how we have. And the people realized in that group on the station committee that particular night, that this was not the place or the time, but they had the question. And if they had the question, we need to answer it, we need to answer it well, and then we'll be able to move forward. So Derek, or others that were at that meeting, any comments? Jeff, Derek?
Yeah, no, I found it was a productive meeting. The village is looking at some things going forward, already on our agenda for Monday's meeting. Chief is right, I mean, this is all a collaborative effort, and one part of the bright spots on my time on the village board has been working with Fire EMS District, I find, just because of working with the townships, and keeping progress moving forward. I mean, we can't, the village can't shoulder the district on its own, and I don't think the towns couldn't really shoulder a district on their own either, so all of us working together, it's an integral part of keeping our community safe, so.
Jeff?
Very positive, productive, great group dynamic with the representatives there, familiar communities, and looking forward to continuing out of this process, and seeing what's best for everybody, at what we can do with what we have.
Kate, would you like to add anything to your...
I just agree with everything, a really good group of people, a lot of different backgrounds, working together.
So with that statement, then I'll go into the next statement. And the next statement is basically, is the first question that's going to come up with this station thing. We believe that we could probably make this work downtown, possibly. But we can't make it work unless the village is at all open to letting us have a good portion of that old village hall, to make it work. So one of the things, I know Derek's got it on, and I know we're going to come, I mean, I just, you know, talk very high level, but we just need to know that the village is interested in that. And if not, we are all prepared, and some in the group are already prepared to look at different station locations, station response times, different things of that nature, which I'm not opposed to, but it's going to come with a larger price tag at the end of the day. So again, it's just something for the people that hold key to this whole thing, for at least the first step, is the Village Board of Oregon.
As we kind of go forward with that process on the village board, I mean, we just need to be real mindful of kind of what comes next, and as Chief alluded to, the price tag, and what our district partners can afford, what we can afford, and that is a discussion for Monday night.
So...
And ongoing from then.
You know, the questions that the committee had there that night, and when they were great questions and all that kind of stuff, and I'll go back to that, the basic things, you know, like they said, how long do you think, Fire Chief, if this is realistic, if we put something down, and we add on to this, how long do you think that this building here can make this last? In my particular mind, I think we're looking at about 50 years, with an addition on the 22-year-old part that you have. You know, you look at the Village of McFarland, and Kathy, I don't know if you realize this or not, but that's, I was over at a new building that they built, they said that that's a 30-year build. And I cannot understand how that's a 30-year build, because I guess that has a 75-year build. But it's a large facility and all the above, but that village is telling me that what they built on the east side of McFarland is a 30-year build. Again, you have to look at the growth, you have to look at what's happening, and we have to look at all that kind of stuff. And then we got into a lot of hypotheticals, and I'm going to throw these hypotheticals out, because I'm sure the village board's going to be thinking about this in the days and weeks ahead, before you guys make a decision, but what do you want your downtown to look like? And I see Elise walked in the door too, but at the end of the day, is it acceptable to have a fire truck sitting on the street, and having some kids around? Or having us out in the street like we are so frequently? And if that is not okay, then you better move us, because you're going to have apparatus on the street, and you're going to have people around the fire station. It is that simple. It is, it is very unrealistic to have the trucks in there, the doors down, and it just be locked up. That is not going to be the case, not, especially in my tenure. I just don't see it happening. I think it's the wrong picture, I think it's the wrong way to go about things, and all the above. So if that's not, if that's not acceptable to the downtown people, the downtown businesses, the downtown people that go through Oregon now, then we'll probably have to go to some remote location, and put us out on some sandy beach island someplace.
Actually, the Town of Rutland is willing to donate our town hall.
That's one idea. That's one idea. Amanda?
Oh, yeah, Amanda Peterson, Village of Oregon. Just to clarify, if there was a new satellite location, it's not just the capital cost of building that building, or getting that set up, it's also going to be ongoing operational costs because of additional staff that have to be hired?
100%. Yep. A former village board member at one meeting, I can't remember, I think it was in the old village hall down there in the basement, I'll call it, but it was the boardroom, asked me, basically, he said, Fire Chief, if you start building two stations, we're going to have to have more people? And I said to him, yeah, you're pretty much right, because again, you have only so many people to respond, you're going to double this, or you're going to try to staff it 24/7, you're going to have to invite your work crew, and when you only have a couple right now, and if you look at, remember back in July, I said, okay, we're talking maybe four by 2030, that we have full-time staff out 24/7. That's a big difference. So yeah, you're looking at dollars and cents of putting men and women on the street. So it's just a matter of, I think, again, one station and all that. And then to hit your remote thing, Amanda, as long as you bring that up, that's a good segue in. Again, you know, the committee already started asking me questions, you think like in 10 years or 15 years, we're going to have to do something on the west side of Oregon, or anything of that nature? And I go back to this, I would hope that good prevailing minds would come together with a plan, in 10 years from now, that would start looking a little larger, broad picture. Personally, I don't think our density is going to be there. Yeah, we're going to have Build It out on the West on CC out here, and everything else where we currently sit, and all that kind of stuff, but I don't think we'll be out to Fish Hatchery Road, that kind of stuff, but maybe in the next 10 years after that, we might be to Fish Hatchery Road, and we might be down past County Trunk A in the Town of Oregon. So if that's the particular case, if you look at Where the Crow Flies, and everything else, and look at some aerial pictures, or some, you know, 50,000-foot views, you start looking at some other fire districts and fire departments, different areas, where it might make some good sense that their population's going up, and all of a sudden, now we need to incorporate some full-time staff there, and have another response coming from another direction, and it makes the best of all the above. Instead of our 46 square miles, might be 76 square miles. You know, but that's another 10 or 15 years, and I hope I'm still living then, and who knows where I'll be. But that's my vision, and that's where I really think we need to go. And the other thing is, I think that's where our state government wants us to go, I think that's where our legislative group wants us to go. And the only way you're going to get that is, you know, some of us, who was some of us? It was Phil, Kathy, who else was back around when we did the original study about 8,000 municipality, where we hired in a consultant from Green Bay? Remember that? Back in about 1997? Right? Remember? I know you guys were there. Phil, you were there?
I wasn't there in 1997.
No? Well, we hired Jeff and that group to come in, Dave Bloom was down here in Oregon, at the Town of Madison, there was eight municipalities that all went together, all put in 8,000 a piece, the Town of Dunn was part of that.
Yeah.
Roz was probably...
He was in the Grove 2000, I think. Probably 2004, 2005.
Remember that, Roz?
No.
I can remember.
See?
Just looking at consolidation.
Yep.
And was it needed in the future? And were there, you know...
Was it needed in the future, and whether, you know, districts could consolidate?
And what did we do at the end of the day? A lot of municipalities all went their own way, built many millions and millions and millions of dollars of fire stations. So some, some areas that those doors are closed, and we know where those doors are closed, but all in all, I think that's, that's the thing, and that's, that's kind of the fun part of this district is to have these dynamics with all of the groups that we have here, bring everybody together and try to make something work at the end of the day. So that's where I am with the station, Derek.
I would say along with that, that the cost savings, the municipality that enters an agreement to do this kind of speaks for itself as we look to expansion and possible remote stations or avoidance of remote stations, I mean, it just makes sense for everyone to work together, make this more cost effective for everyone. Anyone else have any questions on the fire station planning committee? If not, moving on to the item D, Oregon Tree Lighting Set for December 1st, beginning at 5:30 at Waterman Triangle Park, sponsored by the Oregon Area Fire and EMS, with the 2023 Oregon Area Fire and EMS Association Easy Money Raffle drawing taking place at 7:00 PM. This is just another good example of what the men and women down at the fire station do to continue to create a vibrant community and invite people in for education and events. Chief?
No, I think you said it good, it was just, we threw it in there, and basically in '16 we started this, and how many years are we at now? 23, so what is that, seven? Eight? So, it's been a few. So it's been a good, it's been a good run, and we've been bringing a lot of people together, and it's been growing all the time, so. All the above. I take any questions on anything, if anybody has any or wanna quiz me.
All right, hearing none. That just leads us to the fire district side. Item seven, adjournment of the town board of Dunn and the Oregon Area Fire EMS District, town of Dunn.
Motion for adjournment. So move.
Motion second for the discussion. May I have the focus, the progress, and I, I chair the side of the adjournment.
Thank you. And the Oregon Area Fire EMS District Commission?
I'll move.
Okay, so
Second.
Second by ten. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Coast, motion carries. Moving on to the joint area senior center meeting agenda, item eight, goal call Village of Brooklyn.
Mike Pressburg from
All right, so as I said, item eight, call to order, no call to Village of Brooklyn.
Mike Pressburg?
Here.
I'm going to call him on the clock.
So moving on to item nine, business Oregon Area Senior Center, items are for discussion and/or possible action. Nine A, review of 2022 senior center actual expenditures and revenues and true-up of surplus funds. Rachel?
Good evening. So the first item that you have in your packet relating to the senior center, mark nine A, takes us looking backwards at 2022, and this is a document that simply shows what our actual expenditures and revenues were in 2022, and what then the municipalities were credited back with as overpayment. The senior center is a bit unique in terms of departments because we do have the opportunities to raise more revenue than some of the other departments do. So every year, we're making our best guess about how much revenue we might generate through our Belt Day program, how much revenue we might earn as Medicaid case management funding that's funneled from the state through the county to us. So we have always attempted to budget a bit conservatively, knowing that those monies aren't guaranteed, and then if we exceed them, they are credited back to you on your next year's bill, or your next year's contribution. So this document simply shows how the 2022 budget worked out, and we were able to generate more revenue than we anticipated, which meant credits came back to all of the municipalities. In the lower right-hand corner, you can see how much everybody's amount was adjusted at the end, after the audit was done, and you can see just what we had spent. So does anybody have any questions about that 2022 year-end true-up that was what impacted how much you actually paid out in 2020 or 2023?
Any questions on that item? No? Hearing none, moving on to item B, review of 2023 financial statements as of August 31st, 2023.
So we've jumped from 2022 to looking at where we are now in 2023, and as the chief was saying about the fire department, we're about right where we ought to be, right where we expect to be at this time of the year. So I'll take questions if anybody has any, but.
Any questions on item B? Hearing none, moving on to item C, review of statistics of participating communities and other users of the senior center from August 1st, 2022 to July 31st, 2023.
So here we are with all of these numbers. What I'd like to encourage you to do, besides just thinking about these as numbers, is to take a look at OCA Media's YouTube channel, their Oregon Life segment last week, which was eight and a half minutes long or so, was a part one of three that focused on the senior center. We anticipate the next two Sunday mornings, their show airs on the Wild channel at 9:00 on Sunday mornings, then it's available on their YouTube channel. But it, it kind of put some human faces to this bunch of numbers that comes your way. So it gives you a chance, if you're not able to be at the senior center, you're not able to come in and see the variety of things that go on there, and to hear from people who use those services, gives you a chance to take a look at what the senior center's up to. So I appreciate OCA Media's efforts in putting on that show, I appreciate the sponsors of the show, et cetera. But this set of statistics, you know, you have, you have a bunch of raw data here, it's what has been being provided to all of the partners that help contribute to the senior center, help keep our doors open. It's the same kind of information you've been getting for the last decade or so, and it is not always the easiest to read. Those columns tell you how many seniors use a particular service how many times. I always point out the volunteer hours, those are three and a half staff people equivalent. So the volunteers, without them, we would be paying more staff than we are currently. We couldn't run our meal program without our volunteers. We couldn't get people to appointments to see their doctors without volunteers. They're just, they're an incredible part of what we do.
Question, my quarter, I'm Rattlin. Get a question when we're at another meeting, is this unduplicated seniors? Or is this just a gross, if somebody goes four times in a month, or four times in a year, like for instance in Rattlin, we have, you know, 25 seniors, is that 25 individual people?
Yes, 25 different people who received this service, and that for case management would be 116 hours.
Gotcha.
That's how that's, so 52 different people who received outreach.
Yep.
115 times, yes, those are all unduplicated people.
Thanks. But could I ask, can you clarify, Carl Walser from town of Oregon? You know, throughout the column though, those are not unique individuals, right? Someone could be participating in the meal program and also in recreation or any other category.
So yes, for example, in the town of Oregon, 32 people received case management services. I am willing to say that a significant number of them probably also received meals. So in that 49 people who received meals, part of them were those 32 receiving case management.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions on these statistics?
All right, hearing none. Moving on to item D, review of 2024 budget and status of service agreement and service area budgetary contributions. Rachel, did you have anything to say before I can get into this?
Well, just that, you know, our budget is still fluid, the various components of it are dependent in part on, we have county figures in here, the county budget isn't, doesn't have its final approval yet, the county executive hasn't released his budget yet, and some of these figures can vary a little bit. I'm sure that having been through some budget seasons, you can appreciate the fact that nothing is cast in stone yet. They're, again, best estimates.
So that said, I have just a couple of things from the village side of this. I just want to go over first, if I could, a couple of things from the senior center service agreement. And it was an agreement that all the municipalities took part in creating, crafting, and each of our municipalities respectively have passed, and item D of the senior center service agreement, the parties have determined that each will benefit from entering an intergovernmental cooperation agreement under which the Village of Oregon will operate a senior center providing services to senior residents of the Village of Oregon and participating communities, and the participating communities will contribute to the cost of the senior center. A little later on, and I should backtrack here, the senior center service agreement that was last brought forward had an effective date of January 1st, 2022, and shall be in force through December 31st of 2023. And going to the budget coordination and billing, in September each year, the Village of Oregon shall schedule and host a joint meeting among the governing bodies of the Village of Oregon and participating communities. A forum of the governing body of each participating community shall not be required. The purpose of the meeting will be to receive and discuss a draft senior center budget to be prepared by the senior center director for the following year. In the packet, we all have the preliminary senior center budget worksheet. So as we go through this, again, intergovernmental cooperation is important, we're all trying to do the best that we can with what budgets we have put forward. And I'm just gonna go down the list here, starting with the Village of Oregon. The projected preliminary senior center budget worksheet has a total of $448,384.46. Under the senior center service agreement, the Village of Oregon plans to contribute the amount calculated by the senior center. And I guess that will lead down to the town of Oregon. We have a projected total on the senior center budget worksheet of $83,023.96. We're trying to figure out the numbers here, the village is trying to get their budget together, our budgets are all kind of intertwined with this.
Could I chime in?
Yes.
Carl Walser, town of Oregon, in the back of my head. So our, where we are right now is we don't have an answer as far as the numbers go, we just barely started a budget discussion, so I think that we will have something concrete toward the end of October or early November.
Is that it for their accounting as far as being able to get something together in that moment there?
Yeah.
I guess it's, I mean, as far as the service agreement goes, and that's, I mean, part of why we brought this up in summertime, the last service agreement, we were gonna talk numbers for the senior center because it does, our budgets are, again, intertwined on this matter, and it kind of puts a time crunch on our staff to get these together. So the sooner the better. Moving down to the Village of Brooklyn. You're unique in the fact that you're not necessarily part of the agreement, but historically you had made a contribution, the calculated that is on the senior center budget worksheet is $25,874.62. I guess the village would like to know kind of where you're sitting at for that.
Yeah, as a reminder, like, the village is not under contract, so like, for us, we provide a donation to the senior center on an annual basis. This was discussed at our village board meeting this past Monday, and that 15,000 contribution that we've made in recent years, that hasn't changed for quite a while. So out of our own free will, we've desired, we've decided to increase that contribution from 15,000 to 19,000 going into 2024, so.
The village would like a thank you for your contributions to the senior center? I'm sorry, I'm Thank you for your contribution to the senior center, and we look forward to your working with you in the future as well.
Yeah, we know that doesn't match up with kind of that allocation that you did, but when we look at the services that are being rendered and like the percent that the village is consuming, this was kind of like a middle ground that we thought helped bridge some of that gap pretty well. And we appreciate the services that the senior centers provide to the residents, and also knowing the fact that there is a portion of residents that live within Green County that aren't able to necessarily receive all services of the senior center either, so.
And moving on to the town of Rattlin, under the current senior center budget worksheet, we are at $40,921.96.
Mark, would you care to take this?
Well, I don't know, I think we are also, haven't even started our budget processes yet, so it is a little difficult for us to say concretely that we can make that, but I think the board wants to be able to make our contribution as you projected it, but that's, I guess, the best we can do at this point in time.
We are doing a budget summary next Monday, and then our next special meeting, I'm hoping to have it October 16th to get more into the budget.
All right, well, thank you everyone for bearing through that little portion of the Again, the village is grateful for any cooperation, collaboration that we can do with municipalities in the area. Does anyone have any questions or concerns about the senior center preliminary budget worksheet as it stands, other than what's been mentioned already? Village of Oregon, I am doing a lot of talking on our behalf. Is anyone from the village okay with what I'm saying?
They're doing really well.
So I guess this part that we're just reviewing with the senior center preliminary budget worksheet kind of leads into the service agreement and service, service area of the senior center. In our last meeting, the village board had sent out a memo, just kind of allaying the village's position on contributions versus services offered by the senior center. Just from the meeting here tonight, I mean, there's portions of this that apparently we aren't keeping with at the moment. And on that note, I believe the Village of Oregon's plan is to reach out to each municipality and partner, see where we're at with the agreement, do some, where I put it, crafting, I guess, to see how we can keep this together and kind of continue moving forward and working with our municipal partners because of this, we're tied together through so many things just at this meeting, it's important to keep these relationships open and communication going. So the village, I believe, will be reaching out in short order just to see where everyone's at. Any questions? Village, towns? Martin? So that leads us to item E, update on future senior center building project. Rachel, would you, this is
Yes, so we included in the packet for this meeting a memo, sort of my overview memo, which is the future building project update, where we're at. We also included a very reasonable number of pages, quite different from the 600 and some pages. and something pages that the village board has given about a potential future project. But to summarize, the village board decided late last year to hire consultants and owners' rep to study how much space a senior, future senior center might require, what kind of features that might need, and whether the site that we are currently on, the block that we are currently on in the village, which is going to be vacated by the library and the post office over the course of the next year, whether that site might be appropriate for a future senior center, and whether there might be any other adjacent uses for that spot. The recommendation of the owners' representative, which was Tri-North Builders, was presented to the village board last week, on Monday, at their village board meeting. The conclusions are summarized in the packet with the two-page Tri-North's suggestions. I don't know, I don't want to like redo things that you all have the opportunity to already see, but the conclusions were such that they think that a building on that block, perhaps sort of located where the library parking lot currently is, would be suitable, might allow us to stay in the senior center during construction, which would be amazing for us because to try and relocate would be challenging at best. Challenging and expensive probably at best. So, we are optimistic that maybe we will be able to continue to operate out of our space while a new facility might be underway. So, I'm going to let you ask any questions that you might have. You can see there's a variety of features that would update our building significantly. It's pretty exciting to think about possibly designing something for the use it is intended instead of having a remodeled grocery store, which has served us well for forty-three years, and we've been thankful for the space that we have had, but it's also beyond its useful life at this point. So, any questions?
It's going to be Arlen Kai with the town of Oregon. I had served on the library expansion committee, or the library committee, and one of the options was to be adding on to the existing library, but was told by the flat out that that parking lot was a swamp and unsuitable for any construction of any substance other than a parking lot. So now I'm seeing a proposal on this unbuildable lot of a significant building. What has changed?
Well, my understanding is, it is a significant swamp. I don't know that it was ever not buildable. I think it was perhaps less buildable for a library, which is a much heavier use than the senior center would be. I also believe that there have been some soil loaings done that show that everything over there is a bit of a swamp that you're going to want to build, hence the names Brook and Spring and Waterman, right? They were paying attention when they named those streets. But, you know, my understanding is a slab, ungrade kind of building there, that's a one-story building, will be feasible.
Can I jump in? Because I had the same question at the village board meeting. I asked that, I'd heard the same thing, and I asked the Tri-North builder guys directly, you know, have you tested this? Are you sure that you can build this type of building? And they assured me that based on their soil testing and everything, that this is in fact buildable for what they are proposing. A library, two stories, that's something totally different, but for this particular proposal, they specifically said they can do this. So, I heard that too.
We have suspicions.
Exactly, exactly. It's a good question.
Ken, you have a question?
Kent Knutson-Stotin. So, two questions.
Stotin, Stotin.
I'm sorry. What is your daily use, or people coming in on a daily basis now, and what would you build for the plan for daily use in the future?
So we didn't necessarily look at the numbers of daily use. We looked at different components. How many people are we serving meals to, for example? We looked at demographic data that extended out for a significant period of time. In fact, Elise, our, Elise spoke with the state demographer about trying to figure out, how many people are we going to have in this area over a certain period of time to try and make our best estimate as to how much space do we need? But what we also did was we tried to figure out things like, you're never going to have everybody in the community be able to come in, everybody who might want to have a meal come in and eat at the same time. You're just not going to be able to build that kind of banquet hall. Instead, what you need to do is think about, are you going to have two seedings? Make your kitchen big enough to create the number of meals you might need in a day, but not necessarily expect everybody's going to eat it at the same time. So we tried to figure out, how do we build it large enough that services will be provided to the growing population, but how do we also think about expanding the hours, so we can make it open longer? How do we think about offering more things than just once a day? Maybe it needs to be able to be twice a day that some thing's available. So, Elise, do you have anything else you want to add as the, as the kind of the...
Planning piece of this?
Elise Cruz, I'm the director of community development for the Village of Oregon. I guess I would just add on to the kind of capacity question, just say that I think we were really thoughtful in kind of the space needs analysis and the program there to create a lot of flexibility in the building and understand that there are trends right now to have more active uses of the senior center with, you know, desire for indoor walking track and zumba and line dancing and indoor pickleball or whatever it may be, but knowing that those activities, you know, might change in popularity over time, you know, the classrooms, the meeting spaces to be flexible enough in space that as kind of activities and preferences might change in the future, that there would be kind of flexibility in the building so it doesn't become obsolete if all of a sudden nobody's playing pickleball anymore or something, but don't anticipate that happening in time soon. But yeah, again, I think we want to make sure that this space we're planning to be, you know, eighty to hundred-year building, and that, you know, the population's growing, it's also aging, people are also living longer. One thing we looked a lot about is the mobility, because people are coming in with a lot more assistive devices, so walkers and wheelchairs, those need a parking space when you're sitting and having lunch or you're in a class, and so planning for that square footage as well. But yeah, understand that we're never going to really be able to capture everybody who might qualify for senior center services in the building at the same time, but for the building to have flexibility to be able to accommodate use and change as kind of community needs change over time.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the future senior center building project? Hearing none. That just leads us to item number ten, adjournment of the boards, and go ahead and start with the town board of Oregon.
Without objection, the town board of Oregon.
Board of Redmond?
All in favor? adjourned?
Aye. Village of Oregon.
Without objection.
You're welcome. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight.
Thank you.